This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I will make a motion to go ahead and open our regular meeting. This is a planning and zoning board meeting on May 24th and at 6:29 PM.
I'll second.
Okay, member Katura?
Hi.
Member Loda?
Hi.
Member Marshall?
Hi.
Member Shannon?
Hi.
And chairperson Valistra?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll start with our standard COVID announcement that we're meeting virtually due to the coronavirus pandemic pursuant to directives from Governor Cuomo. The link is posted on the village website to give directions to anyone in the public that wishes to join this meeting to observe our deliberations. And with that said, I guess, have we concluded our topics? If anyone want to mention anything more on training? Marina, did you send out that draft packet to everybody? It seems like there's a little confusion. I think the various documents were sent to John and Mr. Reynolds. I think I forwarded to them. And there are basically some stock document, training materials from the State Department, from the Coon series of documents, and a few other things. So I think Dave, I think I may have sent you a copy as well. I think you're working on a few other things. Did that make it out to everybody, Marina, or is that still in the works?
No, I had understood it as just a draft copy. So I had only sent it to you and Mindy. And then I was advised, probably don't send it to Mindy until we have a more finalized copy, just to, you know, cut down on billing hours.
Okay. All right, well, I guess we can talk about that later, what we want to do with it. But if the mayor wants to make some go through revisions to it as well, if anyone has suggestions for topics, by all means, email Marina for things you'd like to find some documentation of. But so far, what had been put in there was some pretty common, standard, basic stuff. Okay, we're done with that topic for the time being. We could go ahead and get into our first application here. Do we have the applicant representing the Pittsburgh Panthers present?
Excuse me, Justin?
Yes.
Did you do the conflict waiver, the conflict disclosure?
Excellent request. I did not. Thank you for catching that. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to disclose?
I do not.
No.
No.
Nope, for me. And again, as a reminder for our new members, this is primarily financial conflicts of interest or other relationships you may have with any applicants for agenda tonight.
Close family relationships count too.
And if they're friends, it's worth noting it. If they're friends or neighbors that are on the agenda, it may be worth noting it, but you don't necessarily need to review this if you believe you can fairly hear the topic. Bless you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Mindy, for that reminder. Is there any other background things we need to get out of the way before addressing the application? Okay. So let's go ahead and hear from the applicant to start with. I would appreciate if you could just give a little bit of a basic description of what you're proposing. I know many of the people around this board have been here and heard this before. And so, but we do have a few new faces. So if you would like to just give a friendly, basic introduction for what you're doing, and if anything has changed from what you've done in the past, I gather it really hasn't, then by all means, let us know. Mindy?
Yeah, Justin, I wasn't sure, I interrupted you, I think, before you opened the public hearing on the application.
Well, we, I guess we haven't opened the public hearing yet. We could either listen to the applicant first and then open it, or we can open it now. So if you'd like to just open it now, let's go ahead and do it. So let's go ahead and I can make a motion to open the public hearing for all applications for, from the Pittsburgh Panther for their temporary event that they are having on, I believe it is June 26.
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, member Katura?
Hi.
Member Marshall?
Hi.
Member Loda?
Hi.
Member Shannon?
Hi.
And chairperson Valistra?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, we will request testimony from the public later. Let's go ahead and let the applicant give us a basic description of what they're proposing so the public can hear.
All right, excuse me, I'm Jody Jansen. I'm with the Pittsburgh Panthers Baseball and Softball Organization. I'm one of three directors on the Pittsburgh Baseball Organization as well. We are, we would like to hold our 10th Annual Sticku Lips Barbecue Fundraiser at the Pittsburgh Farms Dairy on June 26th from noon until 5:00 PM. Basically, we have been pre-selling tickets. And on that date, everyone that has purchased a ticket prior can come and get their prepackaged dinner, pick it up, and take it with them off the premises to consume.
Okay.
That's what we do that day. And then we've been doing it, not last year, but we've been doing it, this will be our 10th year doing it at Pittsburgh Farms.
Hey, now, my understanding is you're doing food service, and you did get a permit from Monroe County Health Department to run a temporary food service establishment.
Correct.
And you are using a licensed caterer, and they're bringing all their own cooking equipment, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's basically, I understand it's going to basically be a food truck that's going to be on site, is that correct? Or is it going to be hard grilling?
Yep.
Okay, Steve, did you have any concerns about the food service aspect of this? And I presume you're, they're getting all their permitting and all that squared away.
No, I don't, I don't have any concerns. The company you're using has a great reputation. I will make sure that I have their health certificate prior to the event and insurances. And as he said, it's the 10th year. It's the same function they've been doing without any problems or complaints.
Okay, great. It's only a one-day event. Let me ask you a couple of questions here. How much time did you need for setup? Was it going to be all done the day of the event?
Setup will be done, it takes an hour for setup.
And so you'll be setting up the day of the event?
Correct. We will come in, you set it up, there'll be three tables, there'll be some volunteers, and I'll be masked with gloves. And we'll leave, and we've, we don't leave any footprint. It's just exactly the way we left it, or when we showed up.
Okay, so you'll have some trash cans, and are you going to be erecting any tents?
It'll just be the temporary tents. They won't be in the ground ready, they'll just be the top and with the, with the four legs, that's all.
Okay, and you can work with the building inspector to make sure that's secured. I know the concern with tents is that if they're not weighted down or attended, a good gust of wind will blow them away. So you're accustomed to this, and I assume you know how to take care of all that?
Yes, correct.
Okay, very good. Is there any music that you're going to do, or any other live entertainment, or anything that'll make noise?
Uh, no.
Okay, so it's food service, people come, pick it up, and head out.
Yep.
Steve, did you have any concerns regarding any coronavirus issues or anything else that should, is important to the board?
No, they, I mean, he said they're going to be masked up and wear gloves. I don't, I don't see where there would be any issue with it, to be honest with you.
Okay, right.
Take care of it, the food service people, I would, I would imagine, but I will verify that they will also be safe.
So I presume we can leave, we can leave a condition to, for you to handle any coronavirus-related concerns and health-related concerns. Okay, what about signage? Did you have a plan for where you're going to put signs up for the event and how far in advance?
If, if, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna submit to the town, I think. They have a marquee over by Ford Field sign. And we usually submit to the town, application for them to put the announcement of the barbecue fundraiser up there, probably a week or two prior to it. It's at the intersection of, where, it's where Ford Field is, Happy Field, it's right there. And then, I think we'll probably have one sign, in-ground sign, it's about two and a half feet tall, we stick right in front of the Pittsburgh Farms Dairy entrance that announces, "Stick in the Chicken and Pork Barbecue Today, 12 to 5." That's all the signage we really, we typically have used.
Okay, so, so you're really not looking to put any signs up around the village, other than the one designated sign at Ford Field that's already there?
Yeah, I mean, we, it all depends. I ordered signs, I'm not sure how many signs we're getting. If we, if we get three, then I wouldn't like to maybe put a sign up in Syracuse Lawn and maybe up by the four corners. If that's permissible.
I think if you have permission from the landowners, we can ask the board members, but I don't, these little temporary events, it's kind of vital to get some publicity for them around the village. And if signs are up the day of the event, I think that's typically not been a big issue, as long as it's not 84 of them. So if it's a handful, it signs up, that, that, I usually consider that to be just fine. Does anyone else have any thoughts about it? I think they would need permission from the landowners. And if it's going to be on, I don't know, if it's going to be on village property, it might be a bigger issue to get permission for that. Does anyone have any concerns?
I think, I think both locations are privately owned places. So if he had permission from the building owner on the corner, and then also permission from Mr. Syracuse, I think that would be fine.
Where is Mr. Syracuse's property?
Right across from the entrance from Tashone Place. Across the road, other side.
Okay, so across the street from the dairy somewhat?
Yeah, yeah.
Right across the street from Robert's Kitchen.
Right.
Okay. That's the attorney's office, that's Del Monte.
I have no concerns about the signs.
And erected the day of the event and take it down, that's the conclusion of the event, correct?
Yeah.
All right, so, do any other board members have any questions for the applicant?
My only question is one of traffic. And do you anticipate a significantly larger ticket sale this year than in prior years, just given the gap year in Corona?
Well, for, for the fundraiser purposes, I hope we do have more traffic this year. But we have been very cognizant about making sure that there is no traffic bleeding into Main Street. We make sure that they pull in. There's, there's usually plenty of parking to go around the circle. They park, they come, get in line, and get their dinners, and then they leave. There's also parking, as you know, in back by the actual building, and then even farther back, there's more parking. So we're very, very cognizant that no, you know, there's not a line that's bleeding out into the street. We tell them, oh, the pull-in, park, and come and get, and then go.
Yeah, so you've never had a challenge with any parking in the past?
No, no.
Perfect, I have nothing further.
Steve, do you have any concerns about vehicle circulation and parking and anything like that?
No, like I said, they've run this, this is the 10th year, and they, and they, there's not been an issue or complaint or anything in regards to parking or overcrowding or anything that I've ever heard of.
And I've been, I've been doing, I've been doing it for 10 years, so it's not like I'm just, you know, doing this for the past couple. I've been doing it since inception.
Right.
So I'm comfortable with the event.
Susan?
So where, where does one get a ticket?
Well, we have plenty right here. You can, you can walk up the day of, you can look, you know, ask around your neighborhood for a Pittsburgh Panther baseball or softball player. I gotta believe there's one around where you live. But you can get some at the day of, or if you'd like to preorder, you can send me an email, and I'll come and deliver tickets to you, to the village building.
Oh, thanks. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for presenting everything. We do have an open public hearing, so let's go ahead and open this up for comments from the public. Marina, have you received any public comments via email or letters?
I'll refresh my emails just to check, but nothing has come in on the chat. But I don't see anything.
Great, is there any members of the public that are participating in this meeting that would like to comment tonight? Okay, it sounds like a no then. I'll go ahead and make a motion then to close both public hearings, all public hearings that are open for this, regarding this application.
Second.
Are you going to call a vote?
Uh, member Loda? Hope you're muted, Susan.
Hi.
Okay, member Shannon?
Hi.
Member Katura?
Hi.
Member Marshall?
Hi.
And chairperson Valistra?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, with that said, while you haven't heard any concerns, I really appreciated hearing from Steve and his perspective from the fire marshal on safety and health concerns there. I'd like to go ahead and pull up our resolutions so that we can take a look at those and comment on them. The applicant, you're welcome to stick around through this. We may be a few minutes discussing it because we have to come up with a sentence or two for each of our required review criteria to explain why we think that's permissible. So I'd expect I'll have a little bit of discussion there, but you're welcome to sit.
Sure, I'll hang up in case you have any more questions, sure.
Um, we would be, we do have some draft conditions of approval. I'm waiting to hear the building inspector's opinion on them, but those, we copied ones that we had from a prior approval we gave to you. And those are basic things like, you know, don't let, route your electric cords so people don't trip over them, have a fire extinguisher for the cooking place, license cooking people. They're mostly common sense things, so there's nothing new here, but it would definitely be worthwhile if you have any comments on any of them. And I'm in particular, we're looking for comments from the building inspector and fire marshal on that as well. If there's any concerns in there or changes needed, by all means, speak up when we get so I think we need to start with this site plan resolution.
Okay. Let me share my screen. Here we go.
So, Mindy, did you, I think you had a chance to browse through some of these. And I know there is some debate about what we need to do with site plan review or not. But back when we looked at the Christmas tree sales, we took a look at our code, and our code said that if there is a temporary permit for outdoor seating and assembly, there is some criteria in there that it needed to be within 20 feet of the primary building. So when we looked at this for the Christmas tree sales, we're like, well, that's inconvenient, maybe we can fix the code. But the code hasn't changed. So there was a caveat in the code that the, there's more flexibility in the location of the event if they receive site plan review. So when we looked at that prior application, we decided, all right, we'll grant site plan review, even though it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that for temporary activity, but this will be a means of handling this until code can get revised to expand the and I believe what we also said is for events that recur every year, I think we concluded that this site plan review probably only needs to be done once and not be done annually if we've already deemed the layout to be reasonable and it hasn't changed substantially. So that's where this is coming from. So it's a little extra time on our part, but I think it's worthwhile to go through this just to make sure that we're completely covered with code and following our criteria to the T. So with that, Marina, you're presenting this. Mindy, I presume you had no concerns about the seeker status and environmental review is not required for a temporary activity?
Correct.
Okay, likewise, Monroe County Planning does not, is not concerned about temporary activities, and we don't need to do a waterfront review for, for this type of activity either. So if you're okay with that language, let's move on to the next page.
I'm fine with that.
So first of all, the building inspector has determined that a temporary use permit was needed to ultimately authorize the action. And otherwise, all the reviews we're doing tonight are adequate to authorize this activity. Steve, I presume you are content with that, that after everything before us tonight, they will be good to go pending any safety inspections you may require?
Yes.
Good, thank you. There's a couple clauses in here about this whole thing in code that cites where it lists that the activity is supposed to be 20 feet from the project. And I know there's been a few interpretations of that, but I think everyone's on board that if we do the site plan approval, it's good. So if we can, if anyone wants to look at this, then that's great, but I would suggest we just start with number four here. And we can just come up with a brief description for each of these items we're supposed to consider. So first is conformity with a comprehensive plan and LWRP. Does anyone have a comment on that? Stumper, huh?
Yeah.
I'm not sure a one-day event is going to rise to any concerns with the LWRP or comp plan.
Yeah.
Just say maybe not applicable?
Yeah, that's what I would like to suggest, and a...
For the next one, adequacy and arrangement of traffic and circulation. I think we, we heard from the building inspector that he found it to be adequate, and they've successfully done this in the past without issue. Is that good with everybody?
Yep.
It is.
I think the same thing for number six, does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Adjacent uses are all commercial to this site? I don't see any concerns about a one-day food service? And anyone have any thoughts?
No, especially because it's okay with the adjacent business.
Okay, off-street parking, loading, and access. Again, I presume the, we can say the same thing about the building inspector. For the applicant, is there any, I presume there's nothing odd you're doing with setup for this. If you have a bunch of vehicles coming there, I presume you have a spot to put them, and sometimes people get a little creative with where they want to park when they got to unload their cars. But I presume this is a solved issue, and I presume Steve is not going to have any concerns, but I'd like to give an opportunity for comment.
No, I, like I said, they've run the, they've run the event, this will be the 10th year, they haven't had an issue with the flow of the cars. People seem to have been respectful of it, they know what the event is, so I don't really see an issue.
I think, Marina, I think it's for the above, you should insert that for number eight, not number nine. That sounds not applicable to me for landscaping.
We may want to with eight as well, just to differentiate this particular property, that the circular traffic flow pattern is well-known in the community and provides ease of access and exit. Just makes it a little bit more unique to this particular property and why this is so convenient from a parking and pickup and drop-off perspective.
Right, and when you considered the Christmas tree application for a temporary permit, you noted that the existing circle in front of the dairy was an ideal location for this temporary activity.
Yeah, good addition.
Thank you, Mindy, you read, you read some of those prior things, excellent. I think I forwarded some around to everybody, but anyway. So the next thing is signage. It sounded like approximately four signs were proposed?
At the most, yes.
Okay, one was across the street, one was at the main, the junction of Main Street and State Street, and then another was at Ford Field?
The one at Ford Field is going to be, there's already a marquee there, that they just have to put the lettering in. The fourth one, if anywhere, might be at the corner of Main or Washington. Or in the past, I put it over at Anthony Daniele's house, in his, in his yard as well. Or in the past, I've, I put it over at Anthony Daniele's house in his, uh, in his yard as well.
Okay. So it's not quite at the corner of, uh, Main Street and State Street. You put it a few doors down, you say, or in a general vicinity.
Yeah.
And then you also have one sign at the dairy as well.
Yes.
All right. Um, so, uh, so everyone thinks that that is reasonable, uh, quantity for this event. And they're only there for one day. So I, I don't have any concerns about that. I didn't hear any concerns from anyone else. Okay, um, lighting, uh, there's no lighting proposed, correct?
Correct.
And stormwater, it sounds not applicable.
Right.
Same for the next. And trash, you are going to, they, you will remove all trash the day of the event and you'll have adequate, um, trash receptacles.
Correct.
And, uh, we pray we don't.
That's me.
I, I presume they, we will hope they don't need a snow removal plan.
I hope.
Dave, this information you provided in, um, in the comments.
Yeah. I was just copying and pasting. I wasn't, um, now that goes back to number four, that there may be some value to simply uh, referencing that the comp plan does, um, this is congruent with the comp plan based on a couple of the items that I just pasted in the comments.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, it's just so that we could have a couple plugs.
I should be able to.
I, I mean, that's not perfectly well written, but that's a copy paste direct from the comp plan. And I was simply thinking that, uh, objective B and, um, C seem to fit reasonably well. And specifically C5 on page 35 of the comp plan.
All right. I'll clean it up. Thank you. Cool.
Yeah. Thank you. I, I like this because we can, um, take this stuff and cut and paste this into, uh, new decisions we happen to run across.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that, Dave.
So back to, uh, 16.
Health, safety and general welfare. Um, I think again, the building inspector already gave us his, um, opinion that, uh, this will be fine. Steve, do you have anything to add?
Nope. I'm good.
And, uh, you're, uh, fine also signing off on it with the, uh, fire marshal as a fire marshal, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you have no additional comments. That's fire marshal. Um, okay. Uh, so I don't see the need for any additional application materials. They showed us basically a simple diagram as to where this is going to be located. Uh, beyond that, I don't have any real concerns. Does everyone else okay with, um, with waiving any additional application requirements?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
And does anyone have any comments on conditions of approval? Other than maybe obtaining a, um, temporary use permit as appropriate?
That's the village board, not us, right?
Right.
That will, the temporary use permit is us.
Oh, yeah, true.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Okay.
That's the next one we'll get to.
All right.
Um, Mindy, did you have any thoughts? I don't think on the site plan layout was one we had a whole lot of concerns about that. Other than, um, you know, sometimes we put things in there that we can authorize a building inspector to authorize appropriate changes to layout. But I think that's more on the temporary use one side.
Right. Well, I mean, it's, it's a five hour event. I don't think they're going to be moving stuff around very much.
Agreed. Okay. Um, with that said, then, um, I'll make a motion to approve this resolution as discussed tonight. Uh, if anyone would like to, uh, mention any changes, thoughts or anything else, by all means, go ahead.
I'll second it.
Member Lotta?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Kichara?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
And Chairperson Belistras?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay. So that takes that one off our list. Um, so the next one, which is the temporary use permit. Mindy, you had a couple of changes you, you found, uh, in here. Um, I did not see what those were.
Yeah, just one, the, um, the paragraph that uh, talks about the 239M referral. I think it's paragraph two or three. If you scroll down, there we go. Uh, it referenced the minor site plan review instead of a temporary event. And this is the, um, temporary use permit application.
Good. So change your minor site plan review to say.
Temporary event or temporary permit.
Thank you. That's a good catch.
Right.
Otherwise, um, seeker is the same and LWRP is the same and all the legalese on the first page is the last one. So the next thing, we can again go through our individual considerations. Um, the first item there is, uh, this is in, the location of this is in the VGB district, uh, Village Gateway Business District, which is a commercial district. And outdoor assembly, sales, display or storage is a permitted use in that district. And it just requires this temporary use permit. Uh, and so Steve, that was your findings as well, correct? This is a permitted use as long as they obtain the temporary use permit.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Steve, for clarification. All right. Uh, so let's just do what we did before and go through these, um, one by one. Um, and hopefully we can start recycling some of these findings in the future. So thoughts on the first one?
Obviously it will.
Um, I would say it, this is a commercial activity and it's a commercially zoned property. That's a, well, I guess it's a, uh, not a commercial activity. It's a food service fundraiser, but the property is owned commercial. So just a fundraising activity and a commercially zoned property is, uh, consistent with the, the zoning intent?
Yeah. This is consistent. Yeah.
Next one, uh, will not depreciate value of adjacent property. It seems to me there's no way a one day event is going to be a concern.
Yeah. Agreed.
So it's a one day event, just my comment. Oh, can we copy and paste our notes about the building inspector from our last ones?
Yeah.
Next one, this won't alter the, it will not alter the essential factor of the neighborhood. Again, it's a one day event. Introduce adverse impacts on the neighborhood. Any thoughts?
Again, temporary one day event. Um,
Also a commercial property.
Right.
Joan, can we ask you to mute? We're getting a little feedback going in.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, um, the other thing for number six, I would add, uh, just in case this is useful, um, in the future. The adjacent properties are all commercial and there are no residential properties nearby.
Well, isn't there?
Across the street, right? No.
So commercially used properties, I mean, or residentially used, the law office might be zoned residential. Um, obviously there's a house on this property, but it's not, they're approving it. So I don't see how they're concerned.
Okay.
Yeah. Justin, may I suggest that you, um, mentioned something about there won't be any amplified sound?
That's a good suggestion.
I'm just thinking if somebody had a one day event, but they were going to have a lot of noise, um, you might want to distinguish it that way.
Um, and another thing is the site has, um, adequate parking.
So Mindy, would you like the no amplified sound added to number five too? Anywhere where we say one day?
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Sorry.
Where, where are we on six or seven?
We're going to add no amplified sound to five as well as six.
Yeah.
It looks like my video feed cut out.
You've been like that for a while.
Yeah, your audio is very choppy. I don't know if it's just me or.
Yeah, you've been speaking and about 12 seconds later, your mouth moves.
All right. I'll have to, um, look into this in the future. It's always problematic from this computer for a while. Maybe I'll have to go back to an Apple device and get away from this Windows stuff.
It's hit it a couple of times. It'll work better.
How about for seven, just say the traffic pattern at the site is well known.
We'll rely on Steve.
So pedestrian safety, nothing is being done that will block the sidewalk. I think it's something that is, is important to note.
Right. And when you considered, when you considered the Christmas tree application, you also noted that the proposed use was on a private lawn well away from the street and sidewalk and will not interfere with pedestrian safety.
Very good. Thank you, Mindy. So I, I suggest we stick that in there.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
What was that from the street and sidewalk?
The proposed use is on a private lawn well away from the street and sidewalk and will not interfere with pedestrian safety.
Is that right? I think interfere is not what you said, but I can see in the recording.
I did say interfere.
Oh, okay.
Pedestrian safe, pedestrian safety. Is that?
Oh, pedestrian, ah, okay.
Specifically deals with pedestrian safety. Thank you. Yeah.
Well done, Marina.
Thanks.
Yeah, well done, Mindy. Thank you for, uh, giving us suggested stuff to copy paste.
You guys did all the work. I just found it. You're welcome.
Um, so any thoughts about number nine here? So noise, odors. I presume there'll be some cooking and food odors, but again, they have restaurants on the adjacent property. So that's nothing new for this area. Yeah. And it's a one day event.
And there'll be no amplified sound.
So I'll just say maybe for cooking and food orders, no concern about a one day event on a commercial property.
I would even say are typical in, in this zone.
Cool. Adjacent to two restaurants, right?
Yeah, you got, well, three. You got Dunkin' Donuts across the street.
Jojo's and, uh, and Pub.
So.
Uh, and the last thing I would add, it's just a one day event.
So even if it is a problem, suck it up.
I have him one day, five hours, even to five.
Could change odor to aroma.
I do like the smell of a good barbecue.
Right.
So and then that one, I think the fire marshal had no concerns. Okay, um, the next thing here is we can take a look through some of this, uh, these conditions of approval. And these were things that we had basically used in the past and many of these were copied from the, some that the town of Pittsburgh uses. And these were things that we had basically used in the past, and many of these were copied from the, some that the town of Pittsburgh uses. It would be, it'd be nice if the village can get kind of a standard document together for some of this, but that's going to probably take some time. Steve, did you have any thoughts about any of these to start off, or should we just go through them one by one?
I'm reading through them, Justin. No, I think it looks very complete.
So first of all, sign locations, I think signs can be erected at the stated locations.
Thirty-one North Main Street. And I believe the other would be at five North Main Street.
Yeah, we could fill that in later with what they stated previously. And everyone, I assume is fine that if they want to change their signs around, the building inspector is welcome to authorize that. Does everyone agree with that?
Yeah.
So the applicant, if you want to get a few more signs or change your locations, just talk to the building inspector and get permission of the property owners. Okay, thank you. So other things, we already went over signage, removing the day of the event. Fire marshal, this was some stock language that they, that any food trucks shall have appropriate permitting and fire marshal authorization. Number five just says that our code enforcement officials can conduct any necessary inspections. Number six is fire lane sidewalks and drive aisles shall be kept clear at all times. Again, if anyone has any thoughts, speak up.
Something, something in here should be mess, mentioned about following all CDC COVID safety protocols.
All right, let's go ahead and put that at the at the end here. So number twelve there.
Needs to be New York State, right?
All CDC and New York State COVID protocols will be followed.
Okay, that's a good one. Or we're last at number, I think we're at number seven. So tents shall be secured at all times. And I guess they don't need it, but this says 6:00 AM on the day of the event. If they don't need to set them up that early, that's fine, but I don't see any strong need to change that.
Truck is self-contained, they shouldn't need any electricity, right, correct, Jody?
Yeah, still be no electricity at all.
Okay, will you leave that in or remove it? It doesn't make any difference?
No, leave it there. That way it's there.
Again, I think number nine is probably not applicable, but in general, if you're doing any cooking, you got to keep it away from tents. And in general, if you're doing any cooking there, you got to have a fire extinguisher. Steve, did you have any comments on that fire extinguisher comments?
No, I'll be checking the truck that the day of. I'll be coming in that day to at least check on the event.
Do you want food trucks to be at least 10 feet from any tent as well?
Yes, and if they're cooking, if there's got propane and they're cooking, and it should stay at least minimum 10 foot away.
Okay, so if we don't need any changes to that. Next ones are probably not a big deal. For a one day event on a Saturday, this isn't much of a concern for handling complaints or revoking permits. That's more for events that are ongoing for a much longer period of time. Like the farmer's market, for example. Any other comments for any conditions of approval that should be added?
Is there cornbread?
There will be cornbread. There'll be Cajun corn, there'll be mac salad and pork and chicken.
Steve, is that imperative for public safety, so we don't have angry mobs?
Yes, cornbread with barbecue, you would, you might have some angry people there if you didn't have cornbread.
Okay, well, we spent a while going through this. Does anyone have any additional comments? Or are we good to just waive the balance of application requirements and vote to approve?
I'd say let's vote to approve.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this temporary use permit. Oh, I think the name of it should be changed at the top there, decision on temporary use permit, instead of temporary zoning permit. Do we have a second approval?
The zoning code, Article 39 does refer to temporary use permits.
It used to be called temporary zoning permits, now they're temporary use permits.
Right.
Do we have a second? I might have missed it.
A second?
Okay. Member Katura?
Right.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
And Chairperson Valistra?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I'm glad we got to get through these with reasonable findings under our new code, and we got to go over some of these safety concerns with the building. Hopefully, we can recycle most, much of this in the future.
You're good to go, Jody. The only thing I will need is insurances from the food truck and then obviously inspected on the day of the event.
Right, okay. All right, on behalf of the Pittsburgh Panthers, thank you very much, everyone, for your time and efforts in this, Steve especially, you helped me walk through this, and hope to see everyone on the 26th.
Okay, thank you very much for sticking through this. It takes us a little bit of time to explain everything, but that's what we do. We try to explain all of our decisions and dot all the i's and cross all the so thank you very much. I hope your event is great.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.
Good night.
Bye, Jody.
So next agenda item to be minutes.
Hey, Justin, Justin, can you kill your camera?
Yeah, I'm sure I can. Give me a second.
Um, do you want me to present the minutes or screen share them, or? Do we need to go through them? Did everybody have a chance to review them?
I have to back up.
I have a comment.
Okay.
So I think it was the first time when I am cited, and I believe I was referring to the Bolger House, and not the Alter House. Not sure where it came from.
All right, let's see. I'm going to go ahead and share so we can find this then.
Seventeen.
Yeah, if you guys don't need me anymore, I'm gonna, I gotta cook some dinner.
Okay, thank you, Steve. That was very helpful to have you present your thoughts on this as a fire marshal and building inspector. Much appreciated.
Thank you all. I'm grateful this all worked out and Jody can have their event for the boys, so, all right, have a good night, everybody.
Thanks. Is this the comment you were referring to?
Yeah. No, so it's not the Alter House, but the, the Bolger House.
Okay. Sorry, how would I spell that? B?
B-O-L-G-E-R. That just refers to very long time owners of the house. It's not even current, but people do refer to that, that house as the, the Bolger House.
Or just put the address of it instead?
Or just put the house at, I don't know what the address is.
Do we know those?
What's the address for the Little House, Joanne?
It's eighteen. The Little House is eighteen.
So would it be twenty, maybe?
The Drakes is twenty-eight, so.
I can look it up in just a moment.
Okay.
I was going to say, if that's something I can find, if, through the historical records on the website.
Yeah, we'll just stick in the address of the property. That sounds great.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else on this one? This is April fifth.
I had a question about that paragraph. So it says Chairperson Vlaztura stated that it appeared that the Bolger House was approximately forty-eight feet to the sidewalk. I don't think it's that much. Justin, where did you get that?
I can go to Monroe County Planning's website. Or county. I'll look this up, I'll be one or two minutes. If you guys want, if you just search for Monroe County GIS, it takes you to a map gallery that you can use to figure this stuff out. I think most of you have seen this used in the past, we use it sometimes in meetings.
Yeah, Justin, later on in the minutes, you said that you looked at the Monroe County GIS website, and that thirty-four Monroe appeared to be about thirty-eight, thirty-nine feet back.
Okay, so the Bolger House. I have it up on the map here, and that is about thirty-eight feet to the property line and about forty-two feet to the sidewalk.
Okay.
So is, is that the thirty-four Monroe prop, are we looking at a different section? Is this, are we talking about this paragraph right here?
Yeah, that is twenty Monroe, I remember, yeah, that's twenty Monroe.
Are we talking about two paragraphs up? The last sentence, isn't that it, Joanne?
Yes, that's the one I was questioning. It just seemed like it was a lot closer than forty-eight feet.
Oh, this one.
Right.
So it's not the Alter House, it's the Bolger House.
Right.
Or we're going to put the address in there, which is twenty Monroe.
Okay. I can make those changes.
And that distance appears to be, it's about forty feet to the sidewalk. At least that's what I currently look at as.
Okay. Do we have any other changes?
The only thing that I might suggest is page twenty-one, or my comment, I think this is still the same day. It would be Member Marshall suggested that board members review, I probably said could review, not just straight up review, but doesn't matter a ton.
Okay. Was, if there is nothing else, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April fifth.
Second.
Okay, Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Katura? Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
And Chairperson Valistra?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Oh, this is Justin, you asked me to stick this in. Did we need to go over it in any way?
This was, I believe, the group edited resolution that we all looked at. So I think that just needs to be in there, so I think this is resolved, so I don't see any, any need for substantial discussion on this.
Okay, I actually, I mailed this out to them as well, and it, funny, funny enough, it came back, so I think Steve was supposed to take it over to them. I will move past this, on to the next set of minutes, which is April nineteenth.
If you'll take a step back, I see that that official decision had the village stamp on it, which I think is something that Mindy is happy to see. I'm happy to see that too, that's a good thing you did. So there's no question as to when, when that was filed.
Right, and that was filed with the, with the village clerk, not just with the ZBA minutes, right? Thank you.
So Mindy, would, if someone were to challenge it, would it officially be thirty days from that, that date stamp, or would it be thirty days from the date of the decision?
It's thirty days from the date that the decision is filed with the village clerk. So if the state stamp is the date and time that it was filed with the village clerk, then that's when the statute of limitations commences.
Okay. And that would be at the latest possible time that it could commence, it could start sooner possibly. Okay. All right, thank you. Go on.
Okay, the minutes of April nineteenth. Did anybody have any edits?
I did not.
No. No. Oh, it was a short one. Okay. So I'm just looking for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Kachara?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
And Chairperson Vlstra?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries and thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you. I, does anyone have any items to discuss or are we going to adjourn the meeting?
I have just one quick comment. I saw that Justin Lightgev joined in. Did Justin Vlstra, you have any questions or comments on the temporary use permits that we wanted to discuss about trying to get together? To address that with our liaison?
Hey, everybody.
Is he officially our liaison now?
Yes, he's officially the liaison.
Yeah, we need to fix temporary permits. My request. And we, an issue is there seems to be a few different opinions that go around about how to interpret them and regardless of whether people have differing opinions, I think we can clarify it. So there are zero differing opinions.
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to go over that. Actually, that was, that was one thing that I did take away from the discussion about the twenty-foot setback, was it, from the building? As one issue that needs to be fixed and I'm sure there are others as well. So I'm happy to attend these meetings, to hang out as liaison and I'm looking forward to bringing any of those issues back to the village board if appropriate. And also, if you have any questions, feel free to let me know.
Yeah, so the other big issue to address is what is eligible for temporary permits? So there's been a much debate about that. As it, do you have to explicitly list it in the youth tables for the districts? Which is what everything else does in code? Or is there some clause in code that just makes everything eligible for it, which is another opinion we've heard? And I hadn't thought that to be the case and Mindy hadn't thought that to be the case, but that doesn't mean there's other, or not other opinions out there.
Right, yeah, that seems like something that's very important to clarify and so I'm happy to bring that back to the board. And there's also a list of outstanding code items that Steve has helpfully prepared too and I've got an email of that somewhere. So. One of my near-term goals is to compile a list of all the code updates that we're thinking of and batch those together.
Yeah, I think you weren't here for our session. I did talk to the mayor about this. And let's just say there's plenty of frustration to go around at wasting time interpreting temporary permits code. There's plenty of discussions with Steve, Mindy, myself and so on, and I think we got to a plan that we felt worked. But. The, one of the, so clarifying things would be good, but the other thing is where, what properties should be eligible for them? Should they be only commercial properties? Should they be allowed at all on residential properties? Or only the residential properties that are, I've called them institutional uses, which are things like churches and community centers and schools and so on. So those make sense. We've had some discussions internally about this. I don't know if we've had, we haven't had a consensus. As to where temporary uses should go, but when they're in a single-family residential home. I think there's a lot of concern there as to what should you authorize and allow on those things. I have much less concern about the other properties. So that's gonna be something that merits some discussion. And I think another thing we've mentioned before is should we open it up to anything and everything? I think it's safer to actually kind of define what things are eligible for temporary permits, such as a, you know, a public event and so on. And. I think in the past, some things that we've wondered about are things that are purely for profit. And what should we do about that versus things that are fundraisers and free events and so on. So. I think clarity makes sense. Mindy in the past has been fond of that. But, you know, I don't think we want temporary events, let's just say a cannabis dispensary across the street from a school. A temporary one operating only during school season. That seems like an example of something you probably don't want to allow in the code.
Right, and I mean, the other thing is I have a philosophical issue with temporary permits to the extent that they can. Be authorized for six months and then for an additional three months. I mean, we're talking about uses that are not permitted in the underlying zoning district. And so you're essentially granting a temporary use variance and I don't think that those things should go on for nine months. You know, I think that's, that's pretty dangerous.
So, Mindy?
You should revise the code, you know, and make it a permitted use. Or not, but you know, this bit about a temporary permit going on for nine months is ridiculous. Right.
Mindy, do you think that's a conflict with state law? On use variances?
Probably not, because the village has, you know, some great home rule powers where they can. Do things like this, but I, I, I think that it's, it's an invitation for trouble. Especially when the rest of the code is being interpreted in a very, the rest of the temporary use. Section is being interpreted in a very expansive way. Other people are interpreting that section as saying that you can pretty much permit anything temporarily. And if you can permit anything temporarily for a period of six to nine months. You've got a real problem.
Well, I know the counter argument to that as well, if it meets the criteria, but I firmly believe you could find something that meets the criteria that isn't gonna bother the neighbors. That is really inconsistent with, particularly for residential properties. That just doesn't make sense. And maybe at one site it would be okay, but when you expand it to eighty-five different properties all going at the same time. It's an issue. And it's also, I mean, we have this code for home businesses. And, you know, that's a pretty decent code to regulate home business operations. I know, Mindy, you've been involved with all kinds of crazy litigation in the past with home businesses that go awry and stuff like that. I, I mean, there's been a few opinions floating around, but I kind of agree that. At least on residential properties, I really think it makes sense to kind of dial this in a little bit and carefully consider things.
Going back to the temporary use for roughly nine months. Is it possible that that could be used as almost a trial period? And then subsequent to those nine months, if it seems to work reasonably well, they change the code to allow it more permanently?
Thank you for running into some problems with illegal spot zoning if you go down that road.
Okay, good to know. So to allow it or have it be a much shorter term?
Well, I mean, the issue has to be whether it's in the public's best interest, not in the property owner or the business's best interest.
Right.
Needs to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, you know, you can't say, well, we'll see how it goes and then. Permit it if there's no big problem. I mean, the, the. Technically, what ought to happen is that the village ought to make a decision as to what types of uses are appropriate and what types of districts. And not leave out this, you know, blanket temporary permit that isn't really temporary because it can go on for six months.
Right, to make a decision, basically.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, go ahead, Susan.
Oh, so I don't know if this is the appropriate place or even for us, but. You know, this fundraiser that, you know, that we just permitted. A hundred dollars seems like a hefty, a hefty fee. Can we weigh in on, on the fee structure for fundraisers and not-for-profits?
That's a village board of trustees issue.
Okay.
And I just want to make it known that it was discussed. In a board meeting, the possibility of waiving fees for events that are trying to fundraise and do charities. And so far, it was left off that we need the fees really in order to properly publicize the hearings and the meetings for those events. So. I'm not sure if they're further looking into it, but I know that right now we do need to charge.
Yeah, a lot of municipalities have the applicant undertake the burden of publication and posting. And provide the municipality with an affidavit of posting and an affidavit of publication and they just do it. And prove that they did it instead of imposing the administrative burden on the municipality.
Oh.
Is that for the newspaper publication? I think that's been discussed a couple of times before and I thought people thought it's a nice service to do it, but a nice service is all Marina's work. Marina may have a differing opinion.
Well.
Right, and the mailings too.
I suppose you could give the option. You, you, you give us proof and it waives the fee or. We do it.
And that's, that's hard to police, you know. Personally, I think you should pick one and stick with it.
I kind of like the service aspect, but recognizing it costs money.
Back to Mr. Lightgev, the comment on temporary permits. The trustees have your own permits. I believe I heard in your last meeting, you guys are basically approving two permits for people to walk down the sidewalk is basically how I interpreted them. So activities going on on private property that for like one-day activities. And I've seen a lot of debate in the past and the building inspector gets confused. We don't need to be down the, in my opinion at least, we don't need to go down the train of permitting birthday parties and garage sales and all that type of stuff. So I think some real clarification is needed. On that type of stuff. So I think one of them was multiple businesses wanted to get together and have a, an art walk or something like that, where three businesses that sold art wanted to coordinate on an event and people might walk between them. And sales at businesses aren't village concerns, whether they walk from one to another. I, the only time I can see this as being a village concern is if it's a very large number of people that get involved. I don't know how to distinguish that, but I really think that we should let people do their own one-day things on commercial properties and private residences without requiring permitting on that.
Yeah, I think that's a good point and at least one of those issues related to a frog house. It seemed like that was. That was the modification of a non-municipal use permit. Due to the fact that there already was one and they wanted to take advantage of that and modify it for a home use. I think that was also a little bit strange, the way that that was done. But to go back to the temporary use permits, there's also been the issue of the ordinance that was passed by village board to allow. Things like Harla de Hots in the interim while we're working out the issue of the temporary permits. And I did express in a meeting before that I thought there were a lot of issues with that ordinance that was passed to kind of get us through until we fix temporary permits. I don't think that it's very robust, the way that it's written. And I hope that we can fix the issue with temporary permits and delegate that again to your board. So. That's the position that I expressed previously and I hope we can work out those, those issues. To get you working on things like Harla de Hots. Again, that was also used in the case of the Boku food trucks too.
Yes, I share the concerns there. And both of those non-municipal use permits, I believe you granted them for property that were not Village of Pittsford owned. So that really struck me as something that didn't make sense because that, I mean, that makes sense that you need to go through a process to authorize someone to use village property for something. But like I said, private property, yeah, not so much. And I think one of them was eventually someone planting plants in their backyard and inviting a few people to look on. That's effectively what it was and getting involved with that makes not much sense.
Right, the reason that, that our attorney expressed that that was under the umbrella of non-municipal use permits is because it could cause traffic issues or sidewalk traffic that's. In excess of what is usual and not necessarily for the part that's on the private property. But again, I also think that was a little bit strange, the way that that was done.
Yeah, I mean, that would mean you'd have to do the same thing. You have to treat everybody the same. You have to do that for birthday parties, which is. Yeah, I don't really buy that. I think that is having a one-day event in your backyard is a traditional accessory use of a house. Inviting some people over. Where it's been weird and we've looked at it in the past is when it's for a for-profit commercial activity. The Buffalo Bills come to mind. They did a shuttle service and they charged people. And they did that at Sutherland High School, which on its face value doesn't sound like a big deal, but it's owned residential. Again, maybe a different zoning makes sense for that, but any property's owned residential, if someone wants to do a shuttle service or the Buffalo Bills. I mean, that kind of makes a sense maybe to look at it. Because it's, that's not an activity that's allowed on that. It's not. I mean, you could say that could be a customary accessory use for a school. There could be an argument there, but it's not an accessory use for a residential property in general.
Justin, follow up your comment on the Bills too. I think it was a couple of weeks ago. They had referenced in the media that it's possible the Bills come back this year, even though they took a hiatus last year due to NFL rules and restrictions.
Well, I think we might need a code change to allow that. It almost seems like every temporary permit needs a code change. So if, I would suggest trying to get something on the books, like in a matter of a week or two. We don't have to finalize everything, but if someone wants to at least get a basic draft hashed out and get a public hearing scheduled. We can still revise code after a public hearing is scheduled, but scheduling that takes a good three weeks. I don't know if, I just see some urgency in resolving these temporary permits so that we can. At least in residential districts, so that we can move on and not have issues with every application.
I agree. I'm happy to bring that up as a member item at the meeting tomorrow and perhaps, Justin, you and I can talk offline about the schedule to present a draft with the changes that we've been discussing.
Great, thank you. Mindy, do you have a comment on that thought as to whether we can schedule a public hearing and then, I mean, it's not necessarily your question, but then make a few revisions. I think we can make a few revisions up until like a week before the public hearing. Then it needs to be posted formally or something like that. I don't know the exact law, but I mean, that's not the process people go down normally and that's talked about, but sometimes you need to get things done somewhat quickly too.
The short answer is it depends on how substantial the changes are.
Okay, so a draft needs to get made. These, okay, all right, thank you. I'm hearing silence.
Yeah. I've got nothing more.
I have nothing more.
Well. Motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second?
Nobody wants to leave.
I've been trying to let people make a few motions here. All right, I'll second it. You're too slow.
Okay, Member Kachara? Okay, Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
And Chairperson Vlstra?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.